Go ahead and call this meeting with Greenwood County Council, November 18 to order. In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, the date time and location of this meeting has been posted here at the library and on the front door of the Greenwood County courthouse. The agenda has been made available to our social media outlets, to the Index Journal, to other media channels, and it's also been posted on our Greenwood County website. We have, for the first time in a very long time, the Greenwood County Council did not have a need for an executive session today, so we're coming directly into this general As we always do, we will begin our meeting with prayer and pledge allegiance to the flag of our nation. Councilmember Pruitt, Vice Chairman, is going to introduce, I think, the invocation.
Sir?
So, Councilman, please.
Sure.
Stand if you may.
Yes, ask you guys to please stand. I want to invite Pastor Philip Howard of Saddle Baptist Church, and rather than talk about you and your credentials, do you think you could give us an update on this young man we recognized less than a year ago that happens to share your last name?
My son's doing great. He's at Jordan School. The food bill went down about half and he went to college, so we appreciate that.
Casey's doing excellent at NC State. Real proud. If you don't mind, come over and deliver our invocation. We appreciate it.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of gathering here tonight as neighbors and leaders and servants of this community that we love. Lord, we also are thankful to have with us tonight 96th High School State Champion Marching Band. For their dedication, teamwork, and discipline, our example to us all, as we're going to celebrate their accomplishment and the entire 96th community that stood behind them in support and pride. Lord, their achievement reminds us of the beauty of a marching band, many different people, many different roles, yet all moving together in step. It echoes the wisdom of your word that says how good and pleasant it is when brothers go together in unity. When a band hears the same rhythm, follows the same cadence, and stays in step, the whole formation moves with strength and purpose. When one section's out of step, the whole group fills it. When there's unity, there is beauty. So, Father, we pray tonight that you would help our council and our leaders and our entire county to stay in step with wisdom. Remember that a house divided against itself cannot stand. Stay in step with humility, knowing that the proverb tells us that with humility comes wisdom. Stay in step with unity, striving to be of one mind and one purpose. May our leaders listen well, work together, honor one another as they make decisions to shape the future of our community. Let the rhythm of cooperation guide their steps, and in harmony with a shared purpose be heard in everything they do. Bless the night's meetings. Bless the champions that we celebrate. Bless every family and neighborhood in Greenwood County. In the name of your Son, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ladies and gentlemen, if you have paid attention to our agenda, you will note that ordinance 2025-29 is in regard to a solar project development in Bradley area of the county. If you've monitored our meetings in the last several months, you will know that I have recused myself from any contact with that, any discussion on that, any participation on that. However, because a portion of that ordinance has now been removed from our agenda, I'm going to ask Vice Chairman Pruitt if he will please give explanation of that in the interest of total transparency. Mr. Pruitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to provide an update on ordinance 2025-29, which was presented to council for first and second reading. This ordinance proposed changing the zoning for approximately 1,005 acres in the area of Five Knott's Road from Forest Agricultural to Rural Development District for a proposed Duke Energy Solar Project. After further review, county staff has confirmed that this type of utility-scale solar project is already a permitted use under the existing Forest Agricultural Zoning District. This means the project does not require a zoning change. The rezoning request has been withdrawn, and the ordinance will not proceed to a third reading. Zoning matters related to this project are not a decision before county council. It is expected that Duke Energy may seek economic development incentives, which would require council action and a public hearing. We anticipate that process beginning in early 2026. As always, information about any future public hearings will be posted on the county's website and social media platforms in advance. Anyone has any questions about the zoning portion of this project, please contact Planning Director Carol Coleman, 864-942-8636, or ccoleman@greenwoodse.com. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Pruitt. Appreciate it, man. Council, I trust that you've had the opportunity to review the minutes from our last meeting, and if so, do I have a motion that we approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Miller, second by Mr. Pruitt. Mr. Pruitt, all in favor? As you announce, this is so ordered. Thank you. No one signed up for public comment, see? Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. Our first order of business tonight will be a presentation, proclamation, recognizing 96th High School Band. Mr. Pruitt, if you could take that with you.
Sir, thank you. All right, we can get all the band and staff, coaches, and everybody who's in the band. Administrators?
There you go.
You took this.
Okay.
New row.
Championship performance again.
There you go. Now, you can stay up here with me.
I'll do it. Yeah, Mr. Vickery and I go back quite a number of years. I served on the school board, and he's always worked extremely hard with this band, and we were just starting to get his stride back then, early, late 2000s, and then proceeded on, he got five feet, now four feet going. And I think he can also admit, when you left here, I think I sent you a text. I'm going to send you another one tonight that says...
See you next year.
Same time next year. Very proud of what you have there. Appreciate you.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Proclamation honoring 96th High School Marching Band, whereas on Saturday, November 1st, 2025, the 96th High School Marching Band won the 1A State Championship at the South Carolina Band Director Association Marching Band Competition under the leadership of Drum Major Camden Mathis. At this event, the Wildcat Band won two caption awards consisting of high visual and high overall effect, and whereas the South Carolina Band Director Association Marching Band Competition throughout the season focused on a series of marching objectives and standards that are met through participation, such as to stimulate interest in the highest quality of musicianship in marching band, to enable bands to receive constructive criticism from qualified judges, to enable students to work together to perform expressively with accuracy and creativity while learning about culture and history. And whereas the band's 2025 production was entitled "The World's Our Stage," as the band members told the story of the narrative throughout music, drill design, dance, symbolism, and body visuals. Whereas, under the leadership of Band Director David Vickery, the band consists of members ranging from the seventh to 12th grades, with a rugged weekly practice schedule and rehearsals beginning in May through the long hot summer days plus Saturday camps. Staff members who devote much of their time and effort to teaching are Joey Babro, Cory Reiser, Zay Sanders, Hampton Dudley, Cameron Brock, Kayden Sables, Joshua Allen, Kevin Davis, and Stacy Lopez. The band performs at Friday night football games and Saturday band competitions throughout the fall competition season. And whereas, in the history of the Wildcat Marching Band, they have achieved the winning title in 13 championships. 13. 2006, yeah. 2006, 2009, 2013, 2015, 16, 17, 18, 19, for the five, 2022, 23, 24, and 25 for the current four feet, and hold the record for the most 1A State Championships won, including this being the fourth consecutive championship. Whereas, David Vickery has been the band director at 96th High School since 1997. He's a graduate of the University of South Carolina, Bachelor of Master Education Plus Performance Certificate, and Walden University of Masters. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, the Greenwood County Council thus hereby extend their congratulatory accolades to the 96th High School Marching Band. They wish the band members, the band director, and the family members who committed their love and support along the way continued success through their performance and educational journeys. Presented on this 18th date of November 2025, Greenwood, South Carolina. You get the ribbon.
Anything you'd like to say, man?
I just, I appreciate the community support, our local community support, administration support, district support. So, thank you all, and the hardworking efforts of these young men and women that are behind me. So, thanks, guys.
Job well done. Thank you. You deserve it. Anything you'd like to say, man?
I just, I appreciate the community support, our local community support, administration support, district support. So, thank you all, and the hardworking efforts of these young men and women that are behind me. So, thanks, guys.
Job well done. Thank you. Thank you, guys, very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Very good. Thank you, guys. I got pictures. Pidig? Awesome. All right. Excuse me.
A lot of folks. I see it's bigger than I thought. Thank you.
Carol, you thought you were going to have a big audience here?
Pardon?
You thought you were going to have a big audience tonight? All right. So, ladies and gentlemen, we have no own business to bring forth, so we'll move immediately now into new business in regard to ordinance 2025-31. We do have a need for a public hearing, so I'll entertain a motion, please, that we move into public hearing.
Motion, Dan.
Motion by Ms. Miller, second by Ms. Bishop, all in favor.
Griffin.
Uh, Ms. Griffin, apologize. Ms. Griffin. Ms. Griffin, you guys start talking a little bit flat. All in favor? That's so ordered. We're now in a public hearing. Ordinance 2025-31 to amend Greenwood County zoning map as and if amended, so that one parcel of land totaling approximately 6.66 acres at 122 Old Mountain Moriah Road in Greenwood County changes from C2 general commercial to R3 single-family residential. Ms. Carol Coleman, I would direct you, please, tell us about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will actually correct the acreage from that. It's now 3.27 acres. There were originally two parcels adjacent to each other. This is the winery on Old Mountain Moriah Road. They decided, post-planning commission, that they were going to keep the commercial parcel as commercial. There's a commercial structure on it, and the parcel with the house on it, they wanted to rezone to residential so that they can convert it back to residential use. Staff supports it. Planning Commission supports it as well.
So, the 6.66, now what we're voting on is 3.27?
3.27. The other lot, which is adjacent to the trucking operation, our trucking, is going to stay commercial for now.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Being in public hearing, I will ask if there's anyone here tonight who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone here tonight who would like to come forward and speak in opposition to this ordinance? Seeing none, we will move to the next item. Next item is ordinance 2025-32 that will amend ordinance 2025-08 for approximately 12 acres of land located at 1510 Monty U. Avenue Extension regarding side yard setbacks in the residential portions of the PDD. Ms. Coleman?
Ms. Chairman, this is a PDD that you looked at, and it was approved in May, I believe, of this year. This is a piece of property, 12 acres, that it butts the Edgemere subdivision, and they came in and asked to a PDD that got commercial planned on the frontage, including a construction office, just design and engineering side of it, not the construction equipment, as well as a spec building for commercial and single-family residential in the rear. After they got into the process of choosing someone to develop it, the developer who would like to do the project with the residential has asked if they could reduce the side yard setback requirements, or at least the envelope, the building envelope, to allow for the type of houses he likes to build. They also reduced the density from about 48 homes to 37. So, I don't know if you remember or not, but this was approved with an extensive buffer around the exterior boundary. So, not only on the northern boundary does it have a 10-foot sewer, it's moved through with Greenwood Metropolitan District between this property and Edgemere, there's also a 25-foot buffer around all of the surrounding property lines. So, there's a good distance between the rear yard of any new home and the rear yard of an adjacent property. If you have any specific questions, I'll be glad to address them.
And that comes with recognition of approval from the...
Both staff and planning commission supported this.
Okay. Remaining in public hearing, then, I'll ask if there's anyone here tonight that's come to speak in favor of ordinance 2025-32. Seeing none, is anyone here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, then I'll take the, I'll entertain a motion to the close of public hearing.
Some.
Motion by Ms. Bishop, second by Ms. Miller.
Ms. Griffin.
Motion by Ms. Griffin, second by Ms. Miller.
Yes.
All in favor? So ordered. Thank you. So, council, and we'll vote these in order. First, ordinance 2025-31, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Allison, second by Ms. Bishop. All in favor? That is so ordered. Ordinance 2025-32, excuse me, ordinance 2025-31, council, what is your pleasure?
32.
This will be 32.
Oh, did I misspeak that?
Yeah.
32, I'm sorry, 32. What's your pleasure? No motion?
I'll give a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second, second by Mr. Pruitt. All in favor?
Question.
I'm sorry. I didn't ask you to discuss. I'm asking, go ahead.
Um, I'd like to ask, this is a PDD. Have we seen a new plan of the new layout?
We do. We do have a plan that's coming in. It's very, it's very sketchy at this point, but like I said, the original plan was approved based on a 48-unit development. They've reduced the number of total residences to 37.
But the setbacks have changed.
They're asking for the setbacks to change because the building envelope, now, the entire structure won't go completely to the line, but architectural features, they're asking for flexibility.
So, are we comfortable approving this without seeing that drawn, I guess, is my concern? Is that normally we see the PDD drawing of what we're voting on, and now there's been a change to that? So, that was somewhat my concern.
Well, I apologize. This is actually what was approved before. So, it's a conceptual plan. We didn't have anything laid out with lines and everything on it. We just knew what the dimensions were. So, what they've done is they're going to, they've kept the same layout, but they've asked for a reduction in the side setbacks, making the building envelope a little bit bigger. But again, they, they have stated that they won't go with more than 37 homes. So, the density has been reduced by over 25%.
So, that's in the PDD that it can't go any more than 37?
Right. Right. And then you see the commercial in the bottom of the corner.
Which is still as is right now? The commercial?
Yes.
It's still as is right now?
Yes.
Okay. And the residential setback remains the same?
No.
No, that, that is what the request is, is to remove the, what they did was they applied the R5 district from the zoning ordinance as their residential design, and when the developer came in, they said, "We'd really like to have more flexibility on sides." They were, they asked for a reduction to five feet to accommodate that, but everything else would stay the same.
It's, it's just a little confusing when you reduce the number of lots along with reducing the setbacks. Usually it's opposite. Okay.
I anticipate the lots will be larger than they would have been if there were more homes.
Well, this is the second reading, right? Mr. Mandur?
Mr. Chairman, basketball question.
Sure.
Clear, huh? I, I read the packet, and I, I think Mr. Allison's question was, is it a PDD reduced from 48 to 37, or they told you their plan to reduce from 48 to 37?
We can put it in the PDD to do that.
Right, right. But I think his question was, is does it? And the answer is no. Sounds like you want that in there, or you add that in there? To clarify.
Yeah.
I would like to have that.
Before third reading, I agree with Mr. Allison. I'd like to see that written in the PDD.
I'm getting it.
Got it.
Because if you're making the, if you're making your setback smaller, it's kind of what Mr. Pruitt said, it kind of makes more room, so, but I, I would like the understanding very clear as to what we're doing, we're setting back which one of these sides we're doing, and so it's clear that we know what we, we're changing, that it is written and proved that way. So, my motion stands, Mr. Chairman.
Conditional funding of the amendment to the PDD as discussed?
Well, we'll just deal with it in third reading, I guess. So, I guess we're practicing as it is tonight, but then, it's definitely how you prefer to do it.
Any, any other questions or comments?
Can I have one question, Mr. Chairman?
Sorry.
Can someone clearly say what, what condition they'd like to see before third reading? Like, at one time, here are all the things you'd like to see.
My concern is the exact setback changes, where those changes are located on the property, and then the change, whatever the changes are, what, what is different from what we voted on or was presented with, and now what is basically what? I think she said all the commercial property is exactly the same as what, as it was. So, what, whatever...
My understanding from reading the packet, that the, the setback that'll have been linked in, I think it was in there, I think what's not in there is a reduction from 48 to 37.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Then, then I guess that's all I'm looking for.
And just for information purposes, this is, this was put into the PDD at their request. This is the R5 district from our zoning ordinance. So, they agreed not to do apartments, but they wanted to have flexibility to do single families, your lot line, you know, all the entire gamut of R5.
Which is still as is right now? The commercial?
Yes.
It's still as is right now?
Yes.
Okay. And the residential setback remains the same?
None.
No, that, that is what the request is, is to remove the, what they did was they applied the R five district from the zoning ordinance as their residential design. And when the developer came in, they said, we'd really like to have more flexibility on sides. They were, they asked for a reduction to five feet to accommodate that, but everything else would stay the same.
It's, it's just a little confusing when you reduce the number of lots along with reducing the setbacks. Usually it's opposite. Okay.
I anticipate the lots will be larger than they would have been if there were more homes.
Well, this is the second reading, right? Mr. Manley?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Do you want to clarify? I read the packet and I, I think Mr. Allison's question was, is the PDD reducing forty-eight to thirty-seven, or they told you their plan to reduce it to forty-eight to thirty-seven?
We can put it in the PDD to do that.
Right, right. I think his question was, does it? And the answer is no. Sounds like you want that in there, you add that in there. To clarify.
Yeah.
I would like to have that.
Before third reading, I agree with Mr. Allison. I'd like to see that written in the PDD.
I'm getting it.
Got it.
Because if you're making the, if you're making your setback smaller, it's kind of what Mr. Pruitt said, it kind of makes more room, so, but I, I would like the understanding very clear as to what we're doing, we're setting back which one of these sides we're doing, and so it's clear that we know what we, we're changing, that it is written and approved that way. So my motion stands, Ms. Chairman.
Conditional funding of the amendment to the PDD as discussed?
Well, we'll just deal with it in third reading, I guess. So I guess we're practicing as it is tonight, but then, it's definitely how you prefer to do it.
Any other questions or comments?
Can I have one more question, Ms. Chairman?
Sorry.
Can someone clearly say what, what condition they'd like to see before third reading? Like, at one time, here are all the things you'd like to see?
My concern is the exact setback changes, where those changes are located on the property. And then the change, whatever the changes are, what, what is different from what we voted on or was presented with, and now what is basically what? I think she said all the commercial property is exactly the same as what, as it was. So what, whatever?
My understanding from reading the packet, that the, the setback that had been linked in, I think it was in there, I think what's not in there is a reduction of forty-eight or other stuff.
Okay. Then, then I guess that's all I'm looking for.
And just for information purposes, this is, this was put into the PDD at their request. This is the R five district from our zoning ordinance. So they agreed not to do apartments, but they wanted to have flexibility to do single families, your lot line, you know, all the entire gamut of R five. They've come back and said they're going to do single family, and they wanted to amend it. If you see up there right now, I think we've, I, I fixed it and there's a set of five feet, single family detached, so. So this would, this would govern it.
So, Mr. Allison, do you want to restate your, your motion? To include the, to include that amendment?
It's whatever how you, if that's how you want me to do it, then.
Okay, so I'll, I'll ask a question, council. If there's no further comments, council, I'll ask you a question. Are, are we ready to vote in favor here on second reading to, to pass this with the amendment as stated by Councilman Allison to, to Carol?
That's my motion.
Okay. And all in favor?
Do we need another second? Your second, Steve?
Mine?
Yeah.
Who's ever second or today?
So, there's a motion by you, second by Vice Chairman. Yeah, I promise, Ms. Miller, I was gonna move quickly, not, we all know how to. I'm sorry, now I'm confused. That was thirty-two, right? That was ordinance thirty-two. So, thank you for that, we'll do that, thank you. All right. So now we'll move into new business. Item A is consideration of the approval of the Airport Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. Telfton, if you would tell us about that, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Every year about this time, I come and talk to you about the, our Airport Capital Improvement Plan. And if you look through, I think you have a table that has all the items on it, as well as the map, kind of help point where the properties are. We always put last, the works on now, last year we approved the twenty twenty-five list and there's an update for our, our airport layout plan. Then we started some design work for our, started some site development for additional hangers, additional access. And that's, those first two items together, the month is just carryover layout moving into twenty twenty-six year. Two years ago, we did some design work for some taxiway de- rehabilitation, that's the area on that map in green. We are looking to move through construction to that next year. We'll be asking for what we call discretionary funds, so we'll take the money we have plus our match as outlined there, and ask for additional funds from the federal government to get that project done, since that's our goal for next year in yellow. I want to point out, we are up, and on the list with the state, the state started a program a few years ago to allow us to basically rehab a secondary runway. The federal government never wanted to do anything but work on the primary runway, so the state saw there being a gap, they wanted to try to fill that, so they got funding to do that. So out of all the airports in the state, we are kind of next up on the list as one of those participating in our program. So what I've shown in twenty twenty-six is to do the design work for that. That's going to be our thirty thousand dollar expense out of our pocket, but that would come down to a, a half million dollar money coming out of our pocket in twenty twenty-seven. So I think that's something that I recommend us do while we have the opportunity to do so. I want to point that out, the large expense coming out if we go through with that project. Beyond the runway reconstruction, we have a swift update, there's some compliance items we want to get our consultants to help us with, waste of water, stormwater, ten points, so that's something we can apply for a state grant for. So that was, that, that item. The other thing I did want to point out to you is, in twenty twenty-six, the last item in purple, that is the hangar site development, and on that map, that was a purple area that was there. How, how the?
Yeah, thank you.
That's that area on there, that's, we did design work for it. That was, we discussed a little lot last year about creating opportunity for hangers to be built if we have somebody come in and want to build them. That estimate for construction is about six hundred and forty thousand dollars, that'll be coming out of our pocket even after the federal funding. So that's another big ticket item. I bring those two large items up because, you know, whoever funded, we're funded for timber sales and hanger men. We don't make a ton of extra revenue each year, we haven't been able to do these small projects, but these larger projects are ones that I don't have the fund balance to necessarily carry both of those strictly through the airport. So I wanted to bring that up as something, as we're making this plan, as something to consider. In fact, this is a five-year plan, if you have time to look at this stuff during the budget cycle, I wanted to at least make you aware. As we run down twenty-seven, I already mentioned reconstruction, the construction phase of that project, that runway, the other thing we'd be working on is navigation easements. And in that map, you see all those parcels in blue to the left of the runway. Those are parcels that we do not own, that have trees on them that could potentially impact the approaches for the airport. So what we're asking to do there is to acquire these easements that allows us to go on the property and cut trees that have become a hazard to the airport. So proprietors will be compensated for them, it's, it's an agreement process, but that's something that we'd be looking at. And that's pretty much taking up our twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine grant cycle years. The last thing we have on here, we've looked at runway lighting we have, is in twenty-nine, or, no, twenty, twenty-thirty. That's so far out, we're just kind of putting that there as something we think we may want to do when the time comes. Obviously, I'll be coming back to y'all again with a plan in a year, and if there's opportunities to change, there's, there's further forecasted items in. This is what we will present to the FAA for approval, as far as how we're planning to address issues over the next five years.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Excuse me. That's right. You know, I had this conversation with county attorney and county manager, you know, with influx of the new development out, old age, I personally believe that there's going to be, for lack of a better term, more traffic in our airport. And I think the time that I've been on council, we've been in a react mode more than we have been proactive. And I think that, I don't mean that negative, I just mean that I think now's the time with the strategic plan coming up, I think that airport discussions need to be heavily involved in this, and I think we need to look at improvements and things that you've been talking about, and ways to fund that, whether below money or, or what. But I, I do think that we need to give this a lot of serious consideration about the improvements and helping to grow our airport.
I, I agree with you, Vice Chairman, I've had a conversation with you and, and the manager about that. And I think there's opportunity for public-private partnership with construction and new hangers. I think that's, that's been the case in, in some of the history of Greenwood County with the airport. I think there's an opportunity for that. Any other, any other discussion? It's a pleasure, council. I want a few motions. I have a motion by Mr. Pruitt.
Second.
Second by Ms. Allison. All in favor is presented. That's your now, this is so ordered. Thank you. Thank you, all. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Item B is consideration of the update to Greenwood County Policy six point three, which our sixth bank policy or county attorney has penned.
You all have, I believe, before you edits to this policy, they are meant to provide more, more of an end to the period for which people can apply for this, just so there's a more definite end, and it doesn't drag out this process. So that's what's reflected in the draft policy you have. And then also, in addition, it gives the county manager discretion to apply, gives him discretion in, in cases of situations that fall under this policy that, that aren't directly addressed, and that he may use his discretion to come to a decision about matter. Those are the only changes, it's all additions, no subtracts.
Ms. Chairman, I offer you a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Ms. Bishop.
Seeing.
A second by Ms. Teresa. Any other conversation or questions? If not, all in favor? That's your now, this is so ordered. Item C, Resolution twenty twenty-five twenty-eight to amend the FY twenty-six budget for expenditure of prior year surplus funds and canceling and transfer from the two thousand twenty-five budget our treasurer, Ms. Dorn.
Good evening, council. This resolution is to talk about our fund, how we ended fiscal year twenty-five with our general fund. We actually had a very small surplus in there of just over twelve thousand dollars. But if you will recall, for the last several years, we have budgeted to use a surplus and we continue to not use it. And so while we don't actually have much of a surplus, we have a fund balance that has been growing because of not using the fund balance. And so what I propose to use in that is that we have another set of retention payments to our employees, as we have done for, been able to do for the last four years. If we do this, the cost will be up to five hundred thousand dollars. We will still have an unassigned fund balance in the general fund of approximately forty-seven percent after that. Additionally, in the FY twenty-five budget, we had budgeted to transfer five hundred thousand from the two point six mils fund to the general fund, and that transfer is not necessary. So section four of this resolution cancels that transfer. As far as the retention payments are concerned, this would be handled the same way that it was last year. Specifically in the resolution, we established that the county manager will establish the schedule. Payments are based upon service. The eligible employees are those who are employed as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, because this is based on that fiscal year, and they must remain employed on the date that checks are distributed. We would include, the county would include paying the cost of the public defender's office and the solicitor's office for those that are assigned to Greenwood County. The only real change in this resolution and our plan is that we specify it does include full-time employees and any part-time employees who have worked more than ninety-six hours in the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five fiscal year. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Comment. Thank you, Ms. Dorn, and I will say, my four years on council, you have managed to do an outstanding job with our finances and put us in this position where we're able to give back to our employees. And I'm sure others may have something else to say, but without hesitation, I'll offer you a motion to approve, Ms. Chairman.
And I second.
I have a motion by Mr. Pruitt, second by Ms. Bishop. Any other comments or discussion?
Ms. Chairman, I have one question.
Please, ma'am.
Is this just on a year-by-year basis, depending on?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Chairman, I have a question. When would this, this go out? If we, if we vote that night, when will they receive?
We intend to have the checks available next week.
So it would be like Christmas?
It's a retention sign.
Not religious. Ah, not religious. Right.
And there is no guarantee we'll be able to do this next year or the year after that. We just, we look at it every year, depending on how we finish.
Well, and thanks to you and your office, Stephanie, and thanks to council for wise decisions throughout the years that enabled us to be able to do this. I think it's one of the things for us to be able to do. Are there any other comments or, or questions? If not, I will ask if you'd like to, we have a motion in second, all in favor of approval. And that is unanimous, not surprising. Thank you. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you, Stephanie.
That brings us to the end of new business. We have no pending items that I'm aware of. We'll move now into district reports, please. District one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Glad to say good afternoon to everyone, and thank you for your presence here tonight. And other than that, all is well in District one.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Mr. Allison, District two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to mention that I attended the two hundred, South Carolina, two hundred and fiftieth Revolution Festival or event at the forty ninety-six on Saturday. I don't know how many of you got to go to that, but it was very impressive, very impressive. It was very well put together. I had some pictures I was going to give to the park to put up, but I didn't know if, I had to go to a funeral out of town today, and I didn't know if I was even going to be back. But it was actually a sign that said Greenwood County, American Revolution. So a lot of signs on there that reference the county of Greenwood. Very good event. I drove over, was going to park, and the elementary school and the high school parking lot was full. And I don't know if you all know how far that is from where the actual site is at, but it's a long way. But it was nowhere near a park, so I live over a kind of road behind the pond, so I walked from my house over there and thought I was going to need oxygen.
I was going to say, did you bring your oxygen?
But I did make it and enjoyed the event, and it was very well done. If you didn't come, you really missed it. So enjoyed it and, and look forward to the other things we're going to be doing, I think, for the two hundred and fifty celebration. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, all the way in ninety-six. I don't go off the van, turn the lights off when they left, but I thank everybody from ninety-six that's here in Greenwood tonight, so I did probably turn the lights off and turn them back on when they got back in town. I come in and seen all the people, I'm like, y'all didn't leave nobody. But all is well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Ms. Bishop, District three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. I pray that everybody has a wonderful evening, and thank you, Mr. Pruitt, for having the band here. You know, I always love to see the children, and it's, it's just so amazing to have people who love music, which I love music too. But it's good to recognize the children, and so thank you for having them here, and it's good to see them all. That ends my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Miller, District four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did attend with, with some other folks, the Gray Street Park, River Cutting, and what a great day. It was beautiful, tremendous crowd, but I think more importantly for me, I rode by this past Sunday, just on, running errands on Sunday, and there was not a parking space available. I mean, it was just packed out there. So what a great use of our capital projects, sales tax dollars, certainly. Veterans Day Parade was well attended. Shout out to Rosalind Burke and her team for, for kind of putting that together and orchestrating that, as well as the Veterans Memorial Plaza dedication. Very emotional day, well-attended event as well, had our local delegation was there. So if you have not visited that, and they gave a lot of shout-out to the county for that big eagle statue in, in the middle of the plaza, I think it completes the build-out of that, that plaza, but please go by and pay tribute to that. It is an amazing facility. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Pruitt, District five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too attended that same ceremony, and I agree with you, it was very emotional, the MIA POW memorial and tribute, and it's always very humbling to watch our veterans and the respect they have for the flag and the monuments, and when the songs are played and, and just everything that they do. We also, and, and this is the final phase, phase three of that whole project, but they unveiled another plaque, I just wanted to read from it, it's quote, "Freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction. We did not pass it on to our children in our bloodstream. It must be fought for, protected, and handed on to them to do the same." And that quote was by former President Ronald Reagan. Also attended the ninety-six Town Council meeting last night. And then, you know, on a personal note, I would say, we have Thanksgiving coming up, and I think so many times, we don't realize how much we have to be thankful for. Personally, I know some of the challenges that I've faced, and I look at others, and we, we have a lot to be thankful for, we have a lot that we're blessed. And I just ask that everybody take this time and reflect and, and realize what you have in front of you, and enjoy that time with your family. And I'll close this, I always do with a Bible verse. Hebrews four sixteen says, "Let us then approach God's throne of grace with confidence, so that we may receive mercy and find grace to help us in our time of need." That ends my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Pruitt. It's always fun. It's always fun to be able to speak last, because I get to tag along on so many great things that are going on in Greenwood County. I also had the honor of actually being able to speak at the Gray Street Park ribbon cutting. And I know you all were shocked and surprised that my comments centered around wise voters in Greenwood County who continue to execute capital project sales tax initiatives for us, and that being one of those projects. I didn't realize, I learned so much in listening to the history of the park. I had no idea that there's, I think they said Cathy, was it additional thirty acres of land still not developed within the park boundary or something like that?
A good chunk of that's kind of a wetlands area.
Yeah. But it's beautiful, and I will tell you that I come by the park at least twice a day generally, and every time I've been by there since the ribbon cutting, it's full of people. So again, a good addition for our community. As they stated, the Veterans Center Dedication Service, retired Colonel Jim Dominick, I thought, gave a very stirring keynote address, I guess, to those of the Senate attendance, and it was just what you would expect it to be. And I'm so proud that the Greenwood County Council now, for most of the time, I think that I've been, Mr. Manager, you probably helped me with how long it's been, but I think since I came on council in seventeen, we've been working with the veterans to complete phase, get us to phase three and complete it. So I'm really proud of that. Thanksgiving next week, we won't see you again before, but I will be, my brothers will be traveling. They don't invite me, so I get to stay home. But I will be driving my aunt, my elderly aunt, who's eighty-six years old, to the other side of Atlanta so that she can enjoy Thanksgiving with her family. And one of my friends said to me, "Boy, that's really bummer, isn't it, you having to drive to Atlanta?" But I thought, "You know what? No, not at all." That's a part of the blessing that I have, one, that I have the help to be able to drive my aunt to Atlanta, and that I have the ability to financially take my aunt to Atlanta. So we're all so blessed with so many of the things that I think sometimes even pass us by. So with that, we will wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving, and that will close my report. Ms. McIntyre, do you have anything for good of your...
No report.
Mr. Manager? Madam Attorney?
I would like to yield my time to Investigator Matthew Lomack. He wants to address you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Oh, good afternoon.
Is she legally representing you or...
I've got employees, so yeah.
Good afternoon.
I'm sure y'all seen my emails. A month from tomorrow will be our third annual Polar plunge that the Special Olympics and Sapporo puts on. The Sheriff's Office has been a member for several years. Last year, we raised almost twenty-eight thousand dollars. And this, and one big misconception about it is, it doesn't go to Special Olympics International. It goes to our athletes. We have thirty thousand seven hundred and seven athletes that are today. We're the sixth largest. And they're hurting a little bit financially, so I'm really pushing big time to raise as much as I can. This is going to be the last two Rock Four twenty-five for them, so... And Captain Smith, y'all be sure to encourage him. He signed up. I'm sure you saw in your emails. He's outside of this here. He's praying about. But, you know, the lake is, or the chairman, Vice Chairman, you know, y'all do have the lake, you know. So if you decided that you wanted to plunge, and this is also great, this is great for carton heads and county managers if they would like to sign up to plunge. Just throwing that out there, so.
Plunge without raising money?
Um, I prefer that you raise.
Ma'am, hold on. So how do you raise money? I mean, or is it a registration for bad to plunge?
Yep, so what you do is you'll scan the code, or I can send you the email link, and you'll sign up. And then you raise, you have to raise at least fifty dollars to plunge. It comes with a T-shirt and check the lake cards and stuff like that. And then you have to...
And we are making a team for Greenwood County. They'll get an email tomorrow, like a county team.
So like the Sheriff's Office says, it's on team. All the schools get involved, Solicitor's Office, Public Defender's Office. They have fun going at each other, which is fine for me. Schools usually have some good competition. They have a costume contest. But again, like I said, a hundred percent of these proceeds go to these athletes. And, you know, if you look at population-wise, where we are as a state versus, we're the sixth largest in the nation as far as having athletes. And we have over two thousand athletes in our lakeland area, and they're going to Minneapolis next year for the summer games. So that money, it goes to them directly. And like I said, this, you talk about being thankful and all that, it's for a good reason.
Absolutely.
All right.
Well, thank you. I'll tell you, as a parent of a special needs child, I really appreciate it. And I think you could, as a secondary fundraiser, I would buy a ticket and watch Eddie jump in the lake, so...
He had set his goal at five thousand dollars.
Really?
He had set, you know, he made like four hundred dollars in a few hours. He did pretty good, so... But he needs some encouragement. And so when you see Captain Smith, be sure that you encourage him to raise those funds. And I'm sure y'all, don't worry, it will be on film. Can't make... Thank you very much. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. If nothing else, then we will adjourn. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here.